The agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented, support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Any questions or comments about that? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. We have an agenda. And the first order of business on our agenda this evening are two presentations. The first one being our annual celebration of the foot, the Ferndale Woodward Dream Cruise. And the folks who operate the Dream Cruise for us in Ferndale are here this evening. If you're wondering why we're all decked out in polo shirts this evening, it's because I'm told that this is an annual tradition that the council and the mayor wear Woodward Dream Cruise clothing at the council meeting before. And I'll tell you, it's pushing me a little out of my comfort zone. I never come to a meeting like this without a coat and tie on, but I don't want to break tradition. So I'm happy to participate. And I believe Michael Larry has a presentation for us.
Good evening, council. Hello, and my name is Michael Larry, event director for the city of Ferndale, and also the director for the 2011 Ferndale Woodward Dream Cruise. As many of us know, that the Ferndale, the city of Ferndale is where the Dream Cruise began in 1995 from a local resident, Nelson House. Since, actually, I just realized today that this will be my seventh year, actually, coordinating the event. And through that time, we've expanded and grown into from a day and a half event to now a three-day event. Once again, this year, for the fourth year, we're proud to announce that Ford Motor Company is our presenting sponsor. The event officially is August 18th, 19th, and 20th. And it will be located, majority of the event will be located on East Nine Mile Road at Woodward Avenue. And we will also be consuming our event with the City Hall parking lot, the library lot, Lux Lot, and Vester Road. Our 2011 sponsors also are Plex System, which sponsoring the entertainment, WXYZ, 104.3 WOMC, CNG Newspapers, Allied, Cruise News Magazine, Superior Ambulance Services, and Autopalooza. Now, our scheduled events, starting on Thursday, August 18th, while Ford Motor Company will have a big presence in our activities, we will also, once again, have the popular Kids Play Zone, we'll have merchant and food vendors, and we will also be starting on Thursday selling our official Woodward Dream Cruise merchandise outside. Prior to that, the merchandise is available here at City Hall downstairs. Our Rockin' Live Entertainment, which will be located in the library lot, begins on Thursday at 6:00 PM with first the Crusade Band, and then the Magic Bus at 7:30. Then we move on to Friday, August 19th. Ford Motor Company, the Kids Play Zone merchants and food vendors, and the official merchandise again for all three days. And then the 11th Annual Ferndale Emergency Vehicle Show from 1:00 to 8:00 PM. At 3:00 on the Rockin' Live Entertainment stage, we will have Full Tilt Band. At 5:00, we will have the annual ribbon cutting ceremony, and then followed immediately by the Lights and Sirens Cruise. And then at 7:00, we will have a very popular band, a Beatles tribute band known as Shout. Then, of course, the big day is Saturday, August 20th. Oops, I did a typo. The 7th Annual Ferndale Classics and Cruisin' Legend Vehicle Show is from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the 13th Annual Mustang Alley is 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. During this time, our Rockin' Live Entertainment is from 11:00 AM with Paisley Fog, 1:30 PM Acoustic Brothers, 4:00 PM Rock Bottom Band, and then at 7:00, another Beatles tribute band, Toppermost. Now, all of these events would not be made available to us without some of the wonderful people that we have as volunteers and the committee, what I call the Ferndale Woodward Dream Cruise Team Leaders Committee. These people consist of local, mostly local, community members who know that it's important to make our city shine and welcome these visitors that we have, which is several thousand. I'd like to take this time to thank those team leaders. John Moore, the community service, Michael Grodzinski and Dan Mitchell, Classics and Cruisin' Legends Vehicle Show, Bill Wilcock, our electrician, Anthony Roscilio, Emergency Vehicle Show, Matt Shroka from Mustang Alley, Cindy Wilcock and Frank Hampton with the merchandise, Cameron Calbyak, Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, Sean Reissa, Ken Warnock, and T. Tinfoil, our security detail, Jackie Anding and Karen Dargo for Stage Manager, Joanne Wilcock, our supervisor, Richard Wilcock, vendor support, and once again Cindy, who helps put together our volunteers. And of course, I also want to recognize Scott Phillip for doing the art for our, this year's design, as well as last year, and the official poster and the official program guide. So a sincere and heartfelt thank you to all of these people who helped make this happen. Because without them, you know, I'm only one person that cannot do any of this stuff without them. So I'm very grateful to them. And of course, all this information about the schedule of events can be found on the officialferndaldreamcruise.com, our website. So more importantly, most of all, is that we ask that everybody enjoy, celebrate, and have a great time, have fun. Any questions?
Any questions with Michael? We look forward to another great event. Thanks for all your hard work and for the hard work of your team, Michael. Appreciate it. Thanks. Our second, our second presentation this evening is Peggy Snow of the Beautification Committee for the July 2011 Beautification Awards. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had the awards for last month. And our commercial one is Ferndale Foods. I think we've all seen how they have completely redone their store inside and out, and it looks great. They do, did a very nice job there, I thought, or we all thought. And we have a rental this time. We don't always get those. But it's at 770 Withington, and it was nominated by a neighbor. It was redone by a company, and they're renting it out now. But the neighbor that nominated it said, "It is a total rebuild of an existing home. It was a blighted home, rebuilt to meet high energy efficiency, green standards, maintain the aesthetics of the home." And it's a, obviously, it's a prairie-type style architecture. I'd never heard of that before, but it's like a square home with two floors, one on top of the other. And, and it, and they gave me before, I have before and after pictures. We don't always have all of this, but yeah, they did a great job with it. And like I say, it was a builder that did it, William PYTIAK and Company, and they're renting it out now. And a residential is 770 Withington. Oh, that was just what I just, I had two, I had, it was nominated twice, actually, so I had both of them in there, excuse me. Residential is 484 West Camborn. And I think we've probably already all been by this one. It's two houses east of Liver Noise, and they have that little wrought iron fence along the front. It's so cute. And it's owned by Kelly and Mario Adams-CAMPOS. And they talked about how much they enjoyed working on it and putting it all together a little bit each year. And the next residential is Joe and Kathy GRACA at 827 West Maplehurst. This is one of those houses, so it's kind of a surprise. When you go there, the front looks very nice and, you know, but not award-worthy. But you go in the backyard, it was just amazing. And then I, we went to take the pictures, and you don't walk in too much because you don't want the neighbors to wonder who you are and all that. So far, the police have never been called on us. But, and so you just kind of go in and take a few pictures and you leave. But so when I went back to tell them, they want, she, they have a bar in the back, and that she says the neighbors all come in the evening and sit around. It's a high, high bar. We sit on bar stools and everything. And they have a pond, and in the way in the back, they have a formal garden. And this, I was, if there was a garden tour anymore, I was, you know, this would be a house, that would be really a nice one to be on that one. So anyway, so those are our ones for this month. And right now, we're working on our perennial exchange, which is Saturday, September 24th, from 10:00 to 1:00. And I just was in contact with a vendor that, from the green event, that, the green fair that was on Nine Mile. And so we're going to have rain barrels for $60, which I think is a kind of a reasonable price for rain barrels. So we're putting all that together, and we hope to see everyone there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy, as always. Great job. It's not on the agenda, but I always like to allow other elected officials, if they, if they join us, to come up and speak during this time. And I see our county commissioner, Craig Covey, who I think has some good news to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And I don't intend to come to all of the meetings, but there's just so much neat stuff going on. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and also Ms. McGrath. Welcome. I look forward to meeting and networking with you. Some really, really good news. A couple of weeks ago, I was here, and I mentioned that we on the county commission were going to try to introduce a resolution for the entire county supporting complete streets. Complete streets, of course, is the concept where, when you build or rebuild roads and streets, that you have an eye towards all of the modes of transportation, not just cars and trucks, but you include the ability for pedestrians to use the roadway, bicycles, also to build towards mass transit, and understand that public transportation is coming. It could even include huts for handicapped folks to be able to use the sidewalks. It was a kind of a long shot. Commissioner Woodward from Royloke, and I introduced it. And it got actually on a fast track, which surprised me. It was up this morning at 9:30 in the morning up in Pontiac, and it passed the committee five to four. We were very, very excited. I'm barely excited. I feel like Ann Heller. I'm just full of energy and all excited. There was a Republican who supported it, Commissioner Hoffman from Highland. It now goes directly to the full county commission. And although there will probably be some opposition, there may be organized opposition coming, at this point, I have three Republicans supporting the complete streets resolution, along with all 10 Democrats, which means we have the possibility of passing it, which would be absolute history-making for Oakland County that has never really been on the forefront of this kind of concept. So now is the time that folks, if you have friends on the county commission, other than Commissioner Woodward or myself, to lobby, to talk to those folks. And in a similar vein, I'm now on the Environmental Sustainability Committee, Commission. And tomorrow night, we will have a program at the Ferndale Public Library, beginning at 6:30. It's a free program. We have a panel discussion, including myself. Commissioner Woodward's invited a couple other advocates, bicycle advocates, who will talk about complete streets, but even more importantly, will talk about advocacy and how we can work together and use our contacts throughout the county to lobby in the next eight days, nine days. Because this will be coming to the full county commission on Thursday, August 18th, at 9:30 in the morning. And later, of course, we'll all come down for the Dream Cruise stuff, but I'm very excited. So if folks are interested in hearing more, tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 9th, at the Ferndale Library, 6:30. And thank you.
Well, and part of what's so challenging, if I'm not mistaken, is that the road commission of Oakland County is officially, or maybe unofficially opposed to the concept of complete streets now, or?
I'm not sure if they're officially, officially opposed to it. They've not been real warm towards the concept in the past. However, times are, they are a change. In the state of Michigan, adopted complete streets, and places up in the northern reaches of our county, places like Oakland Township, Novi have adopted complete streets. I hear that Lathrow Village is about to adopt them. So with Republican support and bipartisan support, which is the way we all should be doing everything that we do, we have a good shot at this, so I'm all excited. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks. Hope the next time we see you, it has passed the full commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. All right, we are now on the agenda item, Call to Audience. I think, as most people know, Call to Audience is up to 30 minutes now, and more time needed at the end of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less on any issue that is not on the agenda, as you'll have an opportunity to comment on those items at that time in the meeting. Please state your name and address, or write it on the sign-in sheet in the back, so that the city clerk has your information. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Evan, Evan Cecil, 921 West Raiden. I'm a Ferndale resident, and I'm here to promote a sort of urban slash suburban renewal program. I have here with me a portfolio of graffiti, or tags, otherwise known as. I believe, I think, and I speak on behalf of the Ferndale community, that these tags are, and I sourced it to me, as well as the whole community. I think that these acts of failed art attempts to mask behavior are definitely something you got to put stop to. Basically, I want to get initiative created to, like, promote initiative to get the graffiti removed, as well as designated tagging zones, possibly a contest for local artists to tag or, you know, promote graffiti. I think this initiative would deter people from tagging business in commerce areas, as well as residential areas of town. A possible suggestion for a projected designated tagging site would be the walkway between Nine Mile and the alley behind the business front, between Dai and Liberty Tags, I believe. So if I could leave these with you here, you guys look over these. I basically want to get these removed. I'd do this myself, if that's okay. If I could get some sort of cooperation with the city council, that'd be great. But a lot of these are right by where my mom lives, too. It's just not pleasant, so.
I'm going to ask a question, maybe of the chief. Does graffiti fall in your purview, chief? I'm thinking it does. Little bit?
Yeah.
He's got a folder of photos that he's taken of various tags and graffiti around town.
Like Gary Park, Harding Park, there's a lot of areas that are just, you know, especially the hockey rink, sort of highly targeted, I'm sure everybody knows.
We have this happen throughout the year, Your Honor. It is partially our responsibility, but there is, we do have a fairly new ordinance that allows us to identify the tag and have the business owner responsible for painting over that, removing it. If it's on city property, then it becomes a DPW. And they are constantly, especially at Gary Park, we're getting hit there a lot. We do monitor that as best we can, but we do receive on the, on the equipment building there, that gets tagged all the time in the evening hours and late at night.
This gentleman has some interest and passion in helping. Do you guys, would it be appropriate for you to change, exchange numbers and maybe talk about how he may be able to assist the city?
Yeah, because if it's done, if the city, like, doesn't have enough budget, I, in my own mind, there is.
Well, I think if you, if you two had a conversation, there may be a way that he and, you know, some of his ideas may be able to help out, chief. Does that make sense?
If I may.
Great. Yeah. Thank you.
I appreciate it, sir.
I would also suggest, a lot of this is public or private property, so if the.
Well, I've talked to business owners, and they wouldn't.
If they allow you to paint that on behalf, and they fund it, and you do it, or find a group of volunteers who will do it.
Well, I have talked to Ferndale kids my age, and, you know, that are interested in kind of, you know, this urban renewal program, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for coming forward. Very much appreciated.
Might want to talk to the Ferndale Community Foundation for next year, right?
Yeah.
Katie, good evening.
Katie Hirschberger, 750 West Maplehurst. I was not able to be here at the last meeting. I was out having a different kind of fun. I, but I did listen to later that evening, and very early in the morning, I listened to the council meeting. And I'm concerned about all of the street vendors that want to come into Ferndale. A couple of reasons. My, I guess my number one reason is that unless they are a resident of Ferndale or already have an existing business in Ferndale, they are the kind of people that I think take business away from some of our business community. And I just don't want to see us so inundated with street vendors that it begins to hurt some of the people who are trying to make a living and a profit here in the city. And it's getting harder and harder with taxes and expenses, and everything goes up, and the income doesn't always keep pace with that. I just want to make sure that we just don't get over-inundated with everybody who wants to capitalize on our fantastic downtown that brings people in, but if they don't, if they're spending their money at the street vendor, they're not spending it at one of our restaurants or stores or other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Betty.
Good evening. My name is Betty LaCromboise, a longtime resident of Ferndale. In fact, more years than so many people are, have lived. I'd just like to make a mention that your three-minute, your three-minute time limit is great. And I think it's been respected through the years. But I would wish to make an issue, when an issue comes up time and time again, such as the noise deal, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I was here the one before, when you had it. After one hour and 40 minutes, and really nothing was solved, you talked about having the noise at a five point, but nothing was done. So then I left. And I just want to make an issue, that couldn't you put a time limit on how long a person talks about a certain issue also?
I'm trying to recall. That wasn't during Call to Audit?
No, no, it wasn't during Call to Audit.
Pretty strict about our three minutes during Call to Audience. I'm trying to recall.
It was a separate one. It was brought up because of the noise issue.
After the motion, oh, after the motion, yeah.
I have lived near the railroad track. I have never complained. I'm awake. If you don't like the noise, put plugs in your ears, you know? There's mirrors, there was nobody on Nine Mile. Now, when you drive down Nine Mile, you see people walking, going into stores. And so I do think that as far as the noise goes, if you don't like it, move.
Thank you.
That's all. That's all I have to say, is that if they could put a time limit.
It's a good idea. We should make it a uniform, three minutes all the way through the meeting, I imagine. That's a good point, Betty. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Call to Audience this evening? Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Douglas, with the, well, a couple of different things. Tonight, I'm representing the Sierra Club, their 7th Annual Green Cruise in downtown Ferndale. It'll be Saturday, August 13th. And once again, we will have a parade right down Nine Mile. That parade starts at 12:00 noon this year, and it is a celebration of human-powered forms of transportation. So anything that you're going to move with your feet, or your arms, or getting pulled or pushed is all welcome. Dress up the green and/or crazy. We don't care. We welcome you all. In addition to the parade starting at 12:00 o'clock, we are also incorporating the 12:00 noon start for the Family Fun Ride, which is a four-mile ride through the neighborhoods of Ferndale. It does not cross any major roads. So that will start also at 12 with the parade and venture off once it gets into the back of the neighborhood. Earlier in the day, at 8:00, is a 40-mile bike ride to the city of Detroit, down around Belle Isle and back. I'd say faster, more experienced bike ride for those that want to do that. And then at 9:00, is a 20-mile bike ride, which goes up north of Ferndale into the other communities, Birmingham, Royloke, and back. Both of those earlier rides should arrive back before the 12:00 o'clock parade. So we ask residents and businesses along Nine Mile to come out and cheer on everybody or participate in the parade. The main Green Cruise event is from 10:00 to 3:00 o'clock at the corner of Planavon and Nine Mile in the southwest quadrant of the Withington parking lot, 10:00 to 3:00. There'll be climbing tower for the kids, bikes to use in the parade if you don't have a bicycle, crafts to decorate your bike, hands-on projects like making recycled bike parts into paperweights and chains and necklaces, and face paintings, sidewalk chalk, all of this is free. Free food, too. For example, Treat Dreams will have ice cream. Western Market will have food there. Garden Fresh Salsa will have chips and salsa, also for free. So lots of stuff to eat, beverages, and also free bike checkups. There'll be other bicycle activities from the local bike shops. And I could continue, but I will stop there. Lots of fun, and it's Saturday, the 13th, and I hope everyone can make it out to the 7th Annual. And thank Ferndale again, and the community for extending their arms to this event. We really appreciate being in the city, and we look forward to seeing everybody. The website is sierraclub.org/greencruise. We also can be found on Facebook. And I think that's it for that. I just have one separate thing to add after you guys might have some questions, if you do.
Any questions about the Green Cruise this year? I know I'll be there. Look forward to seeing you.
Look forward to it. Thank you. The thing I wanted to add was the meeting, the presentation that Craig Covey mentioned earlier, which is 6:30 to 8:00 Tuesday at the library, there is a bike ride immediately following that. So if you're coming to that event, or you want to just join us for the bike ride afterwards, we'll be leaving from the Ferndale parking lot around 8:00-ish Tuesday, the 9th.
How far is that bike ride?
It's going to just be local, so there'll be a couple of opportunities to taper back. And I would imagine it would be about 10 to 15-mile bike ride, would be my guess. But there'll be a couple of chances where a group could peel back. Just have headlights on your bike, please. Follow the law. All right. Thank you.
Just 10 to 15 miles, Mike. You could do that. You could do that, right? Anyone else would like to address council this evening in Call to Audience? All right. Seeing none, a closed Call to Audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by us on council, and we enact them in one motion. Let me read the consent agenda this evening. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 25th, 2011. Approval of a concessionaire license for Carrie Hubbard of Taco Mama. C, approval to require the respective owner of 2035 Hilton and of 2020 Burdette to replace deteriorated sidewalk flags by September 16th, 2011. Approval of the invoice of $3,942 of ASCO Services Inc. of Florham Park, New Jersey for replacing a faulty control panel at the Hilton Road Water Pump Station, and to charge the expense to the Water and Sewer Fund. And finally, E, approval of the bills and payrolls, as certified by the city manager, to be paid subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. Is there any desire to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Moved by Baker, Galloway, supported by Baker. Are there any comments on the consent agenda this evening?
Just to thank you, I guess, to the DDA and the City Clerk's Office for working with the taco vendor to put them in a location that doesn't obstruct as much traffic, pedestrian and otherwise, or obscure a business sign. I appreciate that.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda, we have just one item this evening. Item A, confirmation of the appointment of Helena Rose to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2012. Helena, that's you, right? You want to come up and just introduce yourself? Say hi.
I did not know that I was going to have to say anything, but.
I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
Okay, I've lived here and/or worked here for about 20 years, on and off. And I have been recycling since it was uncool to recycle. And I'm a research analyst now for Detroit Media Partnership. And I have an MBA from Wayne State University. And combining my schooling and work experience with my interest in recycling, I just really wanted to contribute to the FESC. So thanks for letting me.
Well, thanks for your willingness to participate. Thank you for the article that you wrote, I believe, on the patch, on Ferndale Patch regarding recycling, which, which was very educational for a lot of us. And I think your group is going to start working on that issue with us. So thank you for your willingness to step forward and do this. Anyone have any questions or comments of Helena? Is it, am I pronouncing it right, by the way?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right. If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, yes.
I move to approve Helena Rose to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2012. Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Baker. Moved by Piana, supported by Baker. Any further discussion?
One question. Are there any more open, unfulfilled seats on this committee?
Douglas, that's probably a question for you.
Not currently, although there are possible openings depending on scheduling conference, which is a current number of tenants, we're going to keep an eye on that sometimes. A member might reach out, maybe their school program changes, or they've got a commitment to report now, and they'll take them away from the area, at least at times. So we keep an eye on that, three quarters, so we think we're there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Great, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Helena, again, for your willingness to serve. Next item on our agenda, our council liaison reports. Are there any reports under the council liaison reports this evening? And I guess I'll start by saying the South Oakland County Mayor's Association is going to be meeting next month, and Ferndale is going to be co-hosting it with Pleasant Ridge, Oak Park, and Huntington Woods. We're going to do it at Cork Restaurant in Pleasant Ridge. Somehow, they convinced me to go outside of Ferndale. I'm not sure how I let them do that, but anyway, I'll give you a report on that after the meeting. Any other reports? All right, hearing none, we'll go to Call to Council. Police Chief, anything else this evening?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department, Captain May, anything to report this evening?
No, sir, not this evening.
Appreciate it, thank you. Julie Hall, anything from Recreation Department?
Nothing this evening.
I know, okay, really good, too. All right, Byron, I see you back there. Anything for the good of the cause this evening?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, Cheryl Lintoman, anything this evening?
Well, I'm going to be the odd man out. I have a few things very quickly. I know not too long ago, the city eliminated the permit requirement for garage sales. I just want to remind the public that regulations are still in place. You can still only have two garage sales a year from eight AM till seven PM, and you cannot post signs on public property which includes utility poles. And we've seen a lot of that this summer, so I would just ask residents to please cooperate with the regulations. Deadline for submitting nominating petitions to run for mayor or city council is next Tuesday, August sixteenth, four PM. We will be holding an orientation for all candidates, that includes library board candidates, on Monday, August twenty-second, at six PM here in council chambers. The new city manager and I will go over some of the background and general information, and then some specifics as to what you can expect as a candidate, what rules and regulations are in place in terms of signage, what you can expect on election night, and how the city managers and city clerk's office can help you during your campaign. And finally, in terms of food vendors, which Ms. Hirschberger brought up, there's been a lot of press coverage about food vendors, not only in this area, but across the country. And this is something that the DDA director and my office staff have been talking about since the beginning of the summer, and we've talked with the city attorney some. There are plans for us to sit down and really review and talk to business owners and look at best practices that are emerging across the country when the summer season is over. So we should have recommendations to address this new and growing trend before next season starts. And that is all.
And now it is my pleasure to introduce and call on our brand-new city manager, April Grant.
Thank you. It's been a great week so far. I'm on week number two, and I've met with all the department heads and getting up to speed on what's going on in each department. A couple of things that are to be noted. Expect to see charging stations are getting installed this week. We have two of them coming, and, yeah, we're very excited about that. Staff met this morning, DPW with the DDA, as well as DTE, to kind of talk about logistics and how that's going to work, and more will come as things move this week. So see those coming, and hopefully in time for Green, for the Green Cruise, so. And then I just have a couple items of housekeeping that I'd like to talk to council about very quickly. One is, I wanted to talk about the supplemental background information for your requests for action, and just wanted to talk to you a little bit about if you're comfortable with the level of information you're getting, or if you'd like to see more, or different format, whatnot. So this is to be the supplement behind the resolutions that staff is providing for council.
Let me understand. The question is, do we get enough backup material on the resolutions?
Do you feel you have enough information? Is the format okay? That kind of thing. Just making sure that we're on the right track.
Are there certain types of items, like bids or public hearings, where you feel like maybe a little more information would be helpful?
I would really like to push more towards electronic information, especially having printed-out newsletters that I sign up for online. Please stop those. I don't need them. I would prefer them listed in an email with the links to all the articles that the city and staff are interested in for a city council to read. So that is one area I would direct. If others' council members would like to pronounce, please fulfill that obligation for them, but I do not want them anymore in my packet, my weekly packet.
That's your weekly packet, okay.
I would second that.
What are you referring to, the articles? The articles?
I'll throw that.
Okay.
I've read it. By the time it got to me, I'd probably read it.
Not a problem.
A comprehensive list or digest would be...
Yeah, electronic via email.
Yep, perfect. So that's the council information that you get per week? Yeah. So now, as it relates to the information you get for resolutions and ordinance information, are you comfortable with the level of information you're receiving, or you feel it kind of just depends on the item?
I mean, I'd be comfortable, but I'm the new guy up here. Some of you have been getting this stuff longer than me. It seems appropriate for me, but what do other folks think?
I think most things are very well researched and laid out, and I, for one, do like the format that gives us a suggested motion or multiple suggested motions. I know that our city attorney, pretending Mark Stan Krist, likes it when we get the motions correct, as does our city clerk, so we don't need to go back and amend things. Additional backup, it seems that sometimes if something is in the consent agenda, we might only get a line or two of backup. That, sometimes if something is pulled from the consent agenda and the department head's not here, sometimes that delays things. I think on the whole, for the most part, we get a lot of good information, but two or three lines often doesn't stick.
Okay.
I think for significant purchases, I'd like to see more details. So if we're buying an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck, I'd like to see a little bit more information than when we're buying a...
Sure.
...two-thousand-dollar, you know, turnout gear or something like that, so.
Fair enough. If you're comfortable, I just wanted to double-check. It was a good time for housekeeping checks.
Yeah, appreciate it. No, appreciate that.
And one last thing, I just want to say that Saturday, there will be staff who will enjoy a kickball session over in Martin Road Park for Ferncare, and we'll have more report on that at the next meeting. So I really appreciate all the staff that's coming out for that event on Saturday.
I'm learning what a competitive community this is. All right. So standing in for our usual city attorney, Dan Kristus, Mark, happily this evening. Mark, anything from the city attorney's perspective?
I'm sitting in for Dan, he's out of town, but no, we have nothing this evening.
Well, welcome, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tom, Kate Baker, anything this evening?
Just a big welcome to April. We had a wonderful meeting this morning. I so appreciate you coming in. I know that it's still a little bit of a drive, although hopefully soon, maybe you'll be on this side of town, so that you can get used to my seven-thirty AM meeting schedule. The conversation was very productive. Councilwoman Piana may have some things to add as well, but I just really appreciate not only that you sort of, you just dove right into Ferndale with a complete friend of us, but also are taking the time to get to know everyone and see how, you know, what the lay of the land is before just sort of, you know, turning things upside down, because no one needs that. You've gone through a lot of upside-down lately, so I think you've got a great approach. Oh, and also peach is not my color, but I do appreciate the pink. Thank you, Mike. I asked for pink, and I got pink.
All right.
That's it.
Councilman Lennon, anything this evening?
Really welcome April. I met with April before the meeting, and it seemed to go well. I'm not a fan of sports, so I'll kind of lay that on the table. I went to two events at Ferndale today, or last weekend. Oh, that was a mess. I was just proud of Ferndale.
Did you go pick your own feet?
I did.
All right.
Yes, I did. I attended the pub crawl. Craig, I assume you'll have something for us in the near future? I have. Everything seemed to go well. Other than that, I have nothing.
Very good. Thanks. Councilwoman Piana, anything this evening?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, just to follow up and provide some more information to what city clerk Lintoman had talked about, the food trucks. Particular, it's a pro-food truck perspective, one that might interest people to learn more. It's on Metro Mode, metromode.com, and it's the benefits of food trucks. That's the name of the article. So what I really liked about the article was our local business owners praising how easy it is to do business in Ferndale. And I think that's my key message out of all of that. New businesses like to set up here, and that's the environment that we've cultivated for, from the city side. So the other one is that I have always been a supporter of the Green Cruise, and I plan on tackling the forty-mile bike ride. So if anybody wants to join me on the Green Cruise side, please do so. And then I'm going to come back and then jump and kick some butt on some kickball, hopefully for the Ferndale Community Foundation, and... So from one activity to the next, please join us. It's a great, both are great community-building events, so. And I, of course, welcome April. My list of activities for you was not that long as everybody thought, and I'm really excited for you to join us and really make some key progress in the community, city, and helping council achieve some of their goals and objectives for the upcoming year.
Great. Councilman Galloway?
Welcome, April. Looking forward to our meeting tomorrow, and go over in more detail some of the things that I see, and that's it. Keep it short tonight.
Great. And for me, also welcome April. And I want to let the residents know, we mentioned this before, but we're going to schedule an open house, so that people from the public can come on out and say hi to April, and let them know their hopes and dreams for the city, and just get a chance to meet her. So when we have that set, we'll give you a date on that. I want to reiterate something that Peggy Snow said, that the owners of Ferndale Food made a tremendous investment in that property, and just did a wonderful job of upgrading that site, and we're really proud that they did that, and they have become even, an even better member of our community. So thanks for recognizing them, and thanks for the owners of Ferndale Food for doing that. Finally, I just look forward to seeing everybody at the Green Cruise and the Dream Cruise over the next two weeks. So I hope to see you there, and I think Councilwoman Baker has one last thing.
I'm so sorry, I forgot something. On Wednesday evening, this is an important one, it's in my neighborhood, and it's something I've been wanting to do for the last four years. On Wednesday evening at six-thirty at State of the Art Framing, which is on the west end of Nine Mile, the DDA is hosting an open house to talk about the potential future infrastructure improvements to Nine Mile between Liburnoy and Pinecrest. This is an area that I walk regularly. This is an area that has a number of challenges to its infrastructure, including light poles written all the sidewalk, trash on the streets, parking lots that aren't particularly well-kept. There's a lot of potential in that little corner between Libernoy and Pinecrest. So I would encourage residents of that neighborhood, or residents of anywhere in Ferndale, to